2017 to order. Would the clerk please read the roll?
Mr. Badger.
Yes.
Mr. Halter.
Yes.
Mr. Mansoris.
Here.
Mr. Proll.
Here.
Mr. Volnik.
Here.
Vice Chairman Simpson.
Here.
Chairman Keller.
Here. We'd like to welcome Mr. Volnik to our commission. It's his first night serving with us and we're real glad to have him here. And we look forward to working with you. So, thank you so much and welcome. Would the clerk please read item number two into the record?
Approval of the motion summary of the planning commission meeting held on December 7, 2016 as recorded and transcribed.
What is the wish of the commission?
I move to approve the motion summary.
Motion by Mr. Badger?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Simpson. Roll call please.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Mansoris?
Yes.
Mr. Proll?
Outstanding.
Mr. Volnik?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Chairman Keller?
Yes, that motion carries. Moving on to item three of regular business. Would the clerk please read item A into the record?
Item A, 2016-2859. A request by Mr. and Mrs. Corey Hupp for approval of an alley vacation just east of Euclid Avenue between West Fountain Avenue and West Lincoln Avenue adjacent to eight parcels that encompass approximately 0.10 acres and tabled until January 18, 2017.
Okay? Is the first order of business to take this off the table? Do we need a motion to do that?
You don't because you tabled to the state.
To a date certain? Okay, thank you.
So, the update is, table it again if you would please until your February 1st meeting. We've been working with the applicant and they've been working most especially with their neighbors. It does not look like there's going to be an agreement between the neighbors at this point and so it's likely at your February 1st meeting that we'll just ask you to clear your, clear the table at that point. But just want to give this a little bit more time to kind of play out.
Do I have a motion from the commission?
To make a motion, we table 2016-2859 until the meeting of February 1st, 2016.
2016-2859.
2016.
2859.
2859.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Halter?
Second.
Who said that?
I did.
Okay. Second by Mr. Mansoris. Roll call please.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Mansoris?
Yes.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Mr. Volnik?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Chairman Keller?
Yes. That motion carries. Please read item B into the record.
Item B, 2016-3559. A request by Midway Structural Pipe and Supply Inc. for approval of a combined preliminary and final development plan for a new office warehouse building on 11.0 acres zoned M2 general manufacturing district and located on the south side of Pittsburgh Drive and just east of Section Line Road.
I have it.
Okay.
Yeah, the subject sites are located just on Pittsburgh Drive just east of Section Line Road. It's 11 acres, it's zoned M2 general manufacturing. It was split from an existing 48 acre parcel. It's relatively flat site. It's located just, the eastern boundary is a ditch or stream and the western boundary is just, just east of the Columbia Gas Receiver Site that we approved earlier this year. This is the proposed site plan and yellow is the building. It's almost 30,000 square feet. The northern portion of it would be about a 5,000 square foot office and the southern portion would be about a 24,000 square foot warehouse. There'd be a single curb cut from Pittsburgh Drive that would access a 31 space parking lot. The, south of the building, the office portion is, would be fenced off and that's where the lay down area for pipe and fencing would be for the entire site. So, from Pittsburgh Drive to that fence, it should be paved with asphalt per our code. South of the fence, engineers are allowing them to put a dustless surface, it's actually asphalt milling for the lay down area which would be for their pipe and fencing and the From a zoning perspective, it needs combined preliminary and final development plan approved by the planning commission and city council. The engineering department is reviewing the engineering plans as we speak. As I indicated, there's a 31 space parking lot. The eastern portion of the parking lot, the fire department's requesting that they put a key turnaround for emergency vehicles. And also throughout the lay down area, they are requesting a clear access, clear path for accessibility throughout that area and around the, and around the warehouse and office building. There is a detention base and located along Pittsburgh Drive that's outlined in blue on this plan. And also they're proposing a two to three foot high mound around the site planted with native grasses that would form the eastern, western and southern boundary of the site in the lay down area, which would include the lay down area. From a landscape perspective, there would be street trees, front yard trees, in foundation buffer landscaping required. The front yard trees and street trees, 24 required along Pittsburgh Drive. They are identifying 16, so eight more additional trees would be required and 13 of those would have to be along Pittsburgh Drive as street trees. The foundation planings appear to meet our code. Also, they would be required to put shrubs adjacent to the, between the parking lot and Pittsburgh Drive per our code. A lighting plan has been submitted which identifies five light poles. Light poles shall not exceed 30 feet high and shall have cutoff style fixtures. The building itself is your typical industrial building. It's metal panels sided with the metal roof. They are proposing a, a structural brick or structural concrete lane scoting on all four sides of the buildings. The north elevation is actually where the office building is that retrieves past that fence, north of the fence and along Pittsburgh Drive. The building itself would be, the office building would be about 19 feet high while the warehouse portion of the building would be about 32 feet high. The sign which would be on Pittsburgh Drive is about seven feet high. It'd be about 55 square feet of sign area and it would be on top of a limestone base which staff would be required to be a Delaware blue limestone to be consistent with our gateways and corridors plan. Staff recommends approval with 16 conditions. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Ma'am, Chairman members of the commission, I'd just say a couple things. This has progressed very rapidly as many of these projects in the southwest quadrant do and job producing projects do. This one particularly quickly. Matter of fact, we have a building permit in house already and I believe the, the hope is to turn dirt next month. The applicant can talk a little bit more about their timeline and their, I was going to say business, but it's really businesses that would occur here as well. But there have also been some economic incentives approved at this time as well for this project. And so, matter of fact, depending how tonight goes and we assume it would go ultimately positively, we're looking at council on Monday night as well to continue the, the project moving forward. Let's say this is a tough site. I mean, 11 years I've been here, it's, it's on sort of this wedge piece of property with the creek as Lance mentioned, just adjacent to the airport and adjacent to Consolidated Electric Substation, Columbia Gases, let's call it Substation, and then the Limestone Quarry. So, it really has needed the right user for this particular site that can utilize the site and make a good business prospect out of it and be a good business for us and produce jobs for our community. And I think that's what we have here in total. And so, it's a really, really good fit and staff is enthusiastically in support of everything that you see here in your packet. Now, there is a material board down here too, if you want to take a look at that, but obviously in the industrial area, that's not as critical as other areas of the community. Just want to say thanks to the applicants for considering Delaware the site and for moving forward at a rapid pace. I know it's, there's a learning curve with all these things and appreciate your efforts to this point and look forward to working with you and your team out here, your assembled team. Want to just take a moment and thank staff who are here and who might be listening as well on YouTube for their efforts because obviously these industrial projects jump to the head of the line as far as we're concerned. They're very important to our community and we're down some staff in the engineering department in particular. You see Matt Weber's here this evening and we appreciate that. He's a little under the weather, but thanks to staff for working, for, for working very hard. It's a little bit of an unusual business and how they're using the site for, for our community, but I think probably the next appropriate step is to have the applicant come up and explain their business a little bit and why they're interested in the site and excited to be here. But thanks to staff, thanks for that. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any commission member questions?
Is there a internal fencing along the, on that back area where you said there's a fuel pad? Is that required to have?
Why, why don't we pause on that question and remember that? And is there any other questions maybe for staff before we bring the applicant up? No? Okay, then why don't you come on up? Yes, please. Name and address for the record and then you're already here, you can answer the questions and then you can tell us.
My name's Robin Brannon. I'm at 10509 McKenzie Way in Dublin and I'm the owner of Midway. And just, some of you know about the business, but it is a, over a 60-year-old business, well-established business and we have several segments. And the segments that are here in Ohio, you might be familiar with some of this landis fence and we've done a lot of projects around Columbus area. The zoo is one of our more prominent ones. We've done a lot of, almost all the fencing in the exhibits and around the zoo. The most recent one that's recognizable is the Worthington Bridge. It has kind of the wavy structure with the, the name to, to be a little bit of a branding along with the, the safety. That's our fencing as well. So, we've done a lot of different applications from residential fencing, commercial roadway work. So, that is, you know, our fencing division and then over onto Stevens Steel Supply where we do pipe sales and fabrication and some of those fencing, the Worthington, that's one of our fabrication projects and do a lot of work for ODOT, things like that. So, we have a diverse business and that's one of the, the things that attracted Alan and I, my husband and I own the company. He works for me and the owner of the company. I will have to skip that in.
I like that.
I like that. Well, and, and just, my application just got submitted. I'm in the final process of being certified woman owned. So, that's also happening right now. So, because this wasn't enough to keep busy, we are going for certification at the same time. But that is one of the things that attracted us to the business is at its tires. And with that being said, we're in a Columbus location right now that we rent and don't own and my goals for the business are to grow it. And in order to grow it, I want to make sure that we have the proper environment and then we'll attract talent. I have great staff now, but I need to grow and I want to grow it. And that's where I think Delaware is a very nice fit for us. I really like what I see up in that industrial area. I see the prospects with the Saul Mill Extension coming up here, the existing businesses and I see a lot of land up there being dedicated to industrial applications. I think it's a real nice fit for us. We have walked the site, we've looked at several different lots even down there and we were fortunate enough to be there when they had a blasting, the plume went off and we looked at the lot and we decided that that doesn't bother us. And for our application of laying down area with pipe and fencing, this actually, we can make it work. We have burned the area with an ornamental fence that would basically come across and leave the warehouse in the front, I'm sorry, the office in the front, the warehouse and all the lay down areas secure in the back between the burning and the fence. And we would make our own fence and it'll be very pretty, but it is something that I think fits well with that, with that area. I think it's a win-win we've been calling it in terms of my needs and in your locations. So, Delaware has been, you know, very attractive for us and that's why we're here today.
Glad to hear that.
Yeah, thanks.
Just how many jobs?
We, oh yes, we, we have 18 to 20 employees that will be coming with us and, you know, hopefully to add a few in the future to us as this takes off, with an own takes off as well. We're hoping that that will even help us and we're at the, we would have to add staff as the growth continues.
Okay. Does that answer your question for the fuel tank?
No. Would there be internal fencing around a fuel tank or fuel pad? Because I didn't really see that on the notes.
Yes, there would be, yes.
Any other commission member question?
Will you be doing onsite fabrication or is this just initially more distribution?
It is onsite fabrication and that is all inside the warehouse. Where now everything is, is contained inside the warehouse.
Have you made application with the FAA yet?
I have and I just checked on that today. They are waiting for one more member to review. And I have my, the Ohio contact Joan Tagliani, I think, and she said one more and then she, they're ready to put the recommendation together.
How have you found that process?
Easy, to be honest with you, just because I called the site and they walked me through how to go on and do an application, what we need to do. They also, you know, recommended I would go back out and do another one for a crane. So, they were, it was excellent. I didn't find it to be a problem and maybe.
No?
No, it's been great. So, so I, I thought it was a very positive experience.
Will you be participating in any emissions into the air or using any kind of chemicals or?
No, I don't believe so. We're just, you know, we have forklifts running around, but there's no production with chemicals or anything. So, no, nothing emitted to the air.
Okay. So, you're not doing any castings or?
No.
Okay.
Not at all.
Onsite spray, painting of the fencing?
No.
Okay, so it's just complete fabricating?
Yep. That is correct.
Any other question?
Not for me.
Nope. Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I'll move to approve application 2016-3559 with all staff's recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Badger? Second by Mr. Halter? Roll call please. Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Mansoris?
Yes.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Mr. Volnik?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Chairman Keller? Yes, motion carries. Welcome to Delaware.
Thank you very much. And so, I have to say I appreciate all the help of staff because they really have helped us get through and they have also provided us with a very good experience. So, thank you.
That's great to hear. We have an excellent planning and engineering department. So, we're glad to hear that.
Thank you very much.
Your next step will be city council on Monday night.
On Monday.
I will not see you. I will be on vacation, but good luck to you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And hopefully welcome to Delaware.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item four, the planning director's report that has to take at least 45 minutes because we can't have a record-breaking short meeting.
Okay, I can do that if you're not. No, George doesn't. I hope everybody had good holidays and happy, safe holidays and good moments with their family. That's really what they're all about. So, I hope everybody did that. Welcome to Andy. Appreciate you volunteering your time and your service to your community. And I for one am extremely excited that we have a full commission.
Yes.
This is great and we'll have good, healthy debates over 2017 and good projects. February does, the first looks like we're preparing four to five cases pending, even a week or so to go at this point. A couple of those cases are parks and rec related. One is about clarification really to the tree ordinance to really codify what we've been doing in practice and just make it, and I believe it's in code today, but this will clarify that. And that's coming. Ted Miller will be joining us for that meeting. And we are also contemplating bringing forward, and I didn't get a debrief from him today. So, I'm not sure about this, but at some point we will likely be bringing forward an update to the bike plan. And you've heard me mention that that process has been going on for quite a while at this point from our last official plan in 2010. It's going to the park and rec board first as the last one did and makes sense for recommendation to city council and to you guys and then from you to city council. The, the tree ordinance is going similarly to the shade tree commission, recommendations, then on to you and then to council. So, that's the plan for February. Lance, the, you mentioned the other cases that we have.
Yeah, we have Braumiller Woods, Section 3 Final Subdivision Plat, close out that subdivision. Then we have High Wesleyan University's doing the, the Honors House on Oak Hill Avenue and likely Phase 3 SLU on Rowland Avenue.
And we've been working, Ohio Wesleyan's likewise on a very, very tight timeline for this next SLU. We obviously, we have the zoning in place, a good plan. There's a slight change to the plan, but not a big deal really from the concept of it. But we have rekindled this conversation about the idea. You'll remember the last phase of that project was contemplated to be the vacation of Rowland Avenue. That, that wouldn't happen with this next SLU, but I think we want, we're generating some momentum in that conversation and I think at least the staff level, we'd all like to try to conclude that a little bit and know what the game plan is and all be on the same page. Commissioner Halter made those remarks when we went through that case. It'd be good to, to get those details down as fast as we can. So, that's what we're trying to do and still stick with their, they have a donor and stick with the timeline of the donor to get the building started. They probably want to start last week. But they're also seeming to have good purchase with these new small living units, the student living houses like the Honors House. So, I think that's generating some kind of momentum, which is a good thing. We, just a couple of quick things. I'll be getting out an, an annual report to the greater community, but to you guys obviously as a commission ahead of time, just going over on 2016 numbers and that sort of thing and activities of the department. In summary form, we estimate the current population to be about 38,800 or so. So, almost 40,000 people in our community. That's based on building permits only, as you know, but that's, 40,000 will be a significant divide once we get there, in my opinion, as all those kind of numbers are. We had a record commercial permit year, which is still somewhat inexplicable to me right through the recession. As you know, our trend line has been up with commercial permits, but that was, that was impressive to see. We were feeling it all year long, but that's how the final number came out, close to 300 commercial permit of all types. That isn't just new construction, obviously. Our housing permit numbers were quite high, over 300 and then over 200 new single family starts. So, those weren't records, but they were the highest levels since 2005, which was about the peak. So, all things considered, a busy year, a good year. Code enforcement had a particularly good year, just to highlight them for a moment and working with the prosecutor's office and the city attorney and becoming much more aggressive on some properties that really needed to be demolished. But also bringing cases to court and forcing decisions on some of these properties, some of which have sat for a while. But that was good and city council was quite enough to allocate some funds toward demolitions last year and again for the 2017 budget. So, we appreciate that and we think, you know, overall in the scope of 14,000 units or so in our community, you know, taking down, you know, eight of them is, is not huge in aggregate terms, but they're certainly are important properties in those neighborhoods and those areas where you needed to deal with them, very meaningful. And a lengthy process, as you know, to get to that point. So, code enforcement did a good job. They also returned to routine patrol and covered every council ward at least twice last year. And that did produce about 5 to 10% of the cases. So, I think that was profitable towards that exercise and we kind of limited the scope of what we were looking for in that first year of patrol again, just so you could, you could make it through the areas really. We did lose our part-time code enforcement officer in December and we knew probably in 2017 he was going to move on to the next phase of his career in a, actually in another profession and that was always his plan. We knew that, but this was a little accelerated. We are going to refill that position. But for the moment, unfortunately, routine patrol has to be set aside because we just don't have that kind of capacity, but we'll pick that back up. And then for grants and the facade program for downtown in particular, the numbers are just starting to add up and be, I think, pretty impressive. Over 20 projects over the project period over several years and we're about at $800,000 of public and private investment through that program in our downtown. And of course, you can see the very visible, the Hofstra's and hamburger inn and, and other projects that have taken advantage of that to really, you know, help our downtown and solidify it. It's really becoming a pretty incredible place, in my opinion. Highlights from the report and we'll show it all to you in agonizing charts and graphs and that sort of thing. But if you have any questions or you think there's something else that I might be worthy of tracking throughout the year and reporting to you at the end of it, please let me know. I think that's enough on that. I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Any questions? Okay, commission member comments? I'll start with Mr. Mansoris.
Thank you. Happy New Year to everyone. Andy Welkum. Happy to be working with you next several months, over the next year. Good Lord, congratulations, well done. Sounds like you guys are. All of you guys, yeah, wonderful. Just happy to be in Delaware.
Mr. Proll?
A while back, we have one of those concept plans along 23 there for the golf course, you know, the Dornoch Golf Course. Has that moved forward to any type of preliminary or?
No, we've had a series of those concepts since 2009 or so, I want to say. We've had some additional conversations with the developer and his team, but nothing advancing to either a new concept or a formal application, but they're making progress toward, toward that point, at some point of a formal application. So, it could be 2017, that's what I would probably anticipate, but I probably would have said that last year too. So, we'll want to see how it goes. It's in access points, ODOT and obviously uses on that. It's a big change in use on that site. So, all those kinds of things to talk about.
And the Walmart site, any other discussion on that for the empty land?
That's been marketed fairly continuously, as I think we've talked about before. We've had a few calls here or there just from, up there's really more than anything, wanting to know what the zoning is and what they can do with it and that sort of thing. Couple of calls about type of giant apartment complexes here instead and that sort of thing and they haven't come forward. But I know they're actively marketing it. It's kind of hard because there's only, there's a certain number of uses that, that, you know, regardless of zoning, just Walmart won't allow on that site. And if you think of all things Walmart's engaged in, typically those are the uses that can't go back on the site. So, but that limits it a little bit. I could see.
Anything but retail.
Yeah, I could see, I could see if it isn't a large box retailer, some sort of mixed use development potentially being appropriate on that site, but of course, depth is always in the details and the design, as you all are well aware. But nothing specific.
Anything else?
No.
Vice Chair Simpson?
Happy 2017. Looking forward to another productive year of improving the community. Congratulations on 2016. Good job, guys. All the staff, all the city members.
By the way, the windmill was working.
I wasn't even going to bring a windmill up. It's too early.
I did confirm that. You asked the question last time.
You know, it's funny when you mentioned if there's anything we want to track, I thought maybe we should track the days of the windmill.
Spinning days or something?
No, but I'm looking to, looking forward to 2017 and welcome aboard. It's good to have you. It's good to have another buddy in the seat down there. Now it feels like a whole team again. Good stuff.
Mr. Volnik?
Yes.
I want to make sure I pronounce it.
You said it right.
Okay, great. Any comments?
Oh, no. Just excited to be here and this is, this is great. I didn't realize it was this busy. So, this. So this is, uh, this is obviously exciting. So I'm looking forward to this. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. This was a very.
Benign.
Quick and easy. This was painless.
I didn't like that, so.
Don't expect them all to do that.
No, no.
Okay.
One, one more thing, I'm sorry. Election of officers again for 2017. I think obviously we wanted Andy to be able to have a meeting and, uh, meet you all, but perhaps consider what you may or may not want to do for February so we can get that just established and, and move along if it's the same officers or you want to make some changes, so. Is everybody going to be here on February 1st? Okay. Because we always like to try to do that on a, on a full quorum night or a full body.
You leave people, don't show up, you make them off.
Usually they volunteer. It's magically voluntary.
There you go. Mr. Badger?
I'm just constantly amazed at all of what's going on up here from where I come from. It's just mind-boggling to see how you can keep up with all of it and it's exciting. So let's keep at it.
Thank you. Mr. Halter?
Hi, happy new.
Nothing?
Nothing. Sorry, I should, but I don't.
Okay, awesome. Um, I want to make sure that everyone received the memo from Mayor Wriggle regarding the new procedure for if you can't make a meeting. Apparently, um, there was some miscommunications in the past and we have a new full-time, she's not new, but she's now a full-time city clerk that's going to be helping us manage all the things that we have to manage, Elaine McCloskey. So if you are not able to make a meeting as soon as you know, it would be helpful to communicate that with her. How do you prefer to be contacted? Whatever their preference, you can email me or give me my extension?
And as always, you're free to contact us at any time too. If for some reason you can't get a hold of Elaine, we're, we're going to work well together, obviously as we have and communicate, but we're excited to have her onboard and full-time.
Yes. So that way she can manage it so that if we don't have a quorum, meetings need to be canceled and everybody doesn't need to come in here and, um, find out that there's not enough people to do business. So that's going to be great to have that coordinated. Welcome to you. We're really glad to have a full commission again and look forward to just getting to know you better and working with you and having a fuller agenda to really get your feet a little wetter than they were. This was the perfect first meeting. This was perfect. And regarding the election of officers, if there is someone else that would like to step into the chair position, I would gladly hand it over. If you'd like me to continue, um, I would like to do that if that's what you would like. But of course, if there's someone else that is feeling like they're ready to do that, I would fully and 100% support that because I've had a good go at being the chair and sometimes it's kind of like sitting in the middle of the frying pan and I wouldn't really[1764.78]